Right, it's Tuesday, September seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four, seven thirty-one P M. Going to call the meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission to order. Members present are myself, Bob Shabett, Andy Marco, Doug Roberts, Becca Stanowski, Joseph Hall, and Bill Benel. And tonight, we won't need to seat Michael Johansson as an alternate, but we have a full house. Let's see, no applications tonight. Brings us to item D, the continuation of public hearing, P Z dash twenty-four dash eight. Text amendment application to section three and section eleven point oh one pertaining to changes to permitting requirements for home businesses applicant with Lincoln E Z C. So, well, we ended the last time, you know, we talked about, if anybody had any ideas or whatever, to send them to Mike over the course of the week. I'd put there, I'd read through it a couple of times, and I was at a bit of a loss myself on what could actually add to this. That's, I think my opinion is, just my opinion, that if there ever split hairs at this point, you know, would we might put a piece of equipment out, or, you know.
Yeah, I was gonna say, would it be possible that we could amend how we do permitting as far as making sure that we have income from permits for, say, a home office? When I had a home office for my my landscape, I didn't really have, I don't know if it was a home occupation or not, but we had a a permit, annual permit for all of the occupations and offices and so forth. And that was collected annually. That could be going towards, you know, accumulating some money for us to try and build or secure property for a town commercial space that could be utilized by more businesses that don't have their own facilities. You know, like incubator spaces for new businesses.
So, to do something like that here, we'd have to change the table, because right now, the one of the things we're striking from kind of how it's set up currently is to require the annual permits for the lower level home businesses. But as far as the fees themselves, you have a fee schedule which you could recommend changes to, but it's got, that would have to be done by the Board of Selectmen, because the fees are established by ordinance.
Okay.
So, if you wanted to do that, you have to, we'd have to amend this table, but the fees themselves would have to be done separately.
I mean, a home business is realizing income. So therefore, it would be able, it wouldn't be that much of a that much of a weight on the business to pay, you know, a twenty-five-dollar home office fee, or whatever it is, even if it was sixty-five or a hundred bucks. I mean, a home business, home office is generating income. And this income could help us, you know, reach some better solutions to trying to encourage business in town and provide better options for new businesses.
I don't know, how that affects you some of us.
Well, I think economic development commission certainly is a starting point for that. I think a fee schedule to help maintain buildings, if, depending on how the building was created to house small businesses or incubators on that site. I'm, I'm at a loss right now.
But there would have to be a town commitment.
It would have to be, yes, absolutely.
More than the fees we'd ever collect that purchase property.
Absolutely.
And take coordination.
And any, and I've, as I've been mentioning over the course of this discussion, is that the town has always been looking and asking the question, how can we attract small businesses to the community? Well, I think the first step has to be taken by the town. And it's a step that the town has to realize that that's a method of growing the community as well as tax, a tax base. So, I think initially, it's a, it's a discussion that needs to be had with the economic development. But the town also has to buy into this process of growing the community by having a commercial area available for businesses. I, it's, one can't happen without the other. No, it's not something that we're going to decide here, at this, with this commission. But I think we could be the catalyst to start that discussion that plays into a lot of things that the town's been looking at, but hasn't been willing or able to discuss. And I think with the economic development study being done at present, I think that's a good first step. And that study, I think, is a good conclusion to our, what we can all consider the planning and conservation and development, although the development end of that has never really been seriously developed. So, you know, I, I think from us, something needs to be pushed out to economic development and the selectmen. Because the conversation always comes around at budget time, you know, with the Board of Finance. Well, how do we grow? And I think the whole key to this is the commissions need to start communicating amongst themselves and in conjunction with the Board of Selectmen, if this is ever gonna happen.
But one of the things too, you know, you gotta have some interest from, from businesses and stuff to do it, because you, it's not like you build it, they'll come. I, I look at Ashford with all their empty strip mall space over there, just like that, you know, we don't, we don't need a situation like that. And then we struggle to have like the plaza filled up at times.
That's true.
So, it, there has to be like, you know, people that, hey, we come in here, you know, we.
Right, right. Well, you know, businesses might be drawn to the town if they knew that they weren't coming in and footing every, all the expenses themselves, that's what the idea of an incubator space would be. Granted, we don't have all of our tenant spaces filled in the plaza, but it also takes a lot more investment to approach business that way.
I think it's always gonna be a catch-twenty-two situation. And I think the thing that we're trying to address here, correct me with other thoughts that people have, is that we're trying to make sure that the home businesses in town don't become an intrusion on their neighborhoods. I mean, that's what I'm getting, my takeaway from this whole discussion. And I think the big hangup, again, as I see it, is what parameters make that possible? And as we've been batting this around, it's, you know, from the public, we're getting, you know, input. And there's always, there's, there's a hundred and one questions that can be asked about any of this that we've discussed. Pro ManCon. It's one of these things that, you know, do we swallow hard and move this forward in the, in the best sense? You know, take another couple of weeks to look this over and just come to a general consensus, and as Mike has told us, we put this out there, we put it in the regs, and it can be changed. You know, and and we really, we only really heard from one small business in town that has, you know, given us some feedback. None of the other small businesses, regardless of what category they fall into, have spoken. So that kind of leaves us in a lurch.
Yeah, we've been talking about this for months now too, so, you know, we gotta, we gotta bring this to some sort of conclusion, I agree. So, yeah, I'm willing to go another couple of meetings if that's what it takes, but we can't just keep batting.
No.
Here, there, and like, no.
It's almost, you know, look at what we have here. Take another, I mean, two meetings, perhaps, to boil this down, have a discussion about yay or nay.
Yeah.
And then, you know, let's just go through with it. And, you know, I next, I think the next step is, you know, maybe we might have, we can have Mike reach out to Economic Development and have a conversation about what we've talked about. And see, we need more input. Other people in town have to have some kind of thoughts about this. All the, the whole community is looking for ways to garner more tax revenue.
Yeah, I'm not on this or anti-business here by any means, and, you know, this is strictly going in places that are going in R eighty.
Oh, yes, oh, right.
So, we do have to have some consideration for our eighty zones and what we're allowing in.
Absolutely.
Yeah, with, well, being reasonable, you know, obviously, you know, we, we don't kill people to make a living, but you look at some of these things, like visits from members of the public, I would see four per day, who's gonna ever police that? Yeah, it's, it's fine to have it there, but they're just gonna be watching it. It's.
I think it's one of those things.
Guideline.
It's a guideline. If there was a business that was, that was exceeding that, it would be easy to, that, you know, you could have someone out there, or a neighbor could easily tell, you know, well, this person, you know.
Hundred people coming in here a day or something, or this.
Or five cars in the driveway at any one time.
Or semi-trucks full of product, you know, loaded here, like, you know, it's, it's more like a retail store than it is a, a home occupation.
Right.
I can tell you from our open house that we had, that the townspeople that came out and talked with us were supportive of keeping the R eighty, you know, limited without it being over-exploited for businesses. And when we talked with people about more of a centralized area for possibly businesses to come in and grow to, the feedback was phenomenal, people were like, that would be an incredible idea, that could be ascertained in this town. You know, they were very supportive of and felt that it could help things grow and keep a nice balance between, you know, the rest life and the business life. So, it was very receptive to those people that we actually spoke with at our open house.
No, I understand that, I also understand if somebody has a pretty large piece of property, they have pulled something out of the air tree removal business, they have a few pieces of equipment sitting there, they go, I wouldn't do that, they, right there. Should, we shouldn't have a problem.
No, no, and, and nobody was like, nobody was stating like they wanted everybody to leave, they just wanted the checks and balances a little bit, like, that was kind of what we got from the communications, so.
Walter.
Yeah.
Do we ever have joint meetings with E D C?
We haven't in a long time.
We, we have.
Yeah, we had one that I recall, maybe two, but we can certainly have one.
You know, give us some feedback that we're missing.
I, I do think we should, that's why I brought them up like a while ago, and it's, especially when we're talking about incubators and things like that, you know, you're bringing it up. That's something that they should certainly. I'm, I'm gonna go to the public here.
Couple different things, Dave, oh, David, Robert, and Willington. Bob is correct, in that you're gonna need to develop an area, you're gonna have to co-develop it. Because right now, for the Willington, go lay out like for a piece of property just for businesses, nobody's gonna do. There's three hundred acres sitting on Ruby, that, I know one of the three owners, and the intent is to sell it to the highest bidder for anything they can put there. Previously, it was looked at as a gun range, and that almost went through with the state, because it wasn't state money, it's almost scary. Essentially, I've, many years ago, before children, I mean, I built a lot of houses, seven houses any minute of the day. Willington, compared to many other towns, is the most difficult to develop and make any sort of profit. That reputation proliferated. So, other people come into this area, will look at other towns, unless we develop a area that's conducive. We have some aged schools, and one of the proposals back when, Willington buying that parcel, it was about two million at the time. That was before interest rate increases, but the amount that would be added to property taxes was minimal. If it was distributed through the town, it's a bonding kind of increase. That died at the time, you know, Christine was involved with it, and there were discussions that went higher up to the state, because there was money on the federal level for academics. Tier and Baker should have enough room to go into both. Some newer schools, because I don't feel would love to get that Elvis Ross off his neck with old school. But just for school, for all in that won't apply. If you combine it, you probably have an opportunity, where you have both schools, have a business development area that is away from most R eighty rural areas. In terms of people that have been calling me, looking to buy my parcel, calling from Route thirty-two all the way through Jared's Park, so that three hundred acre parcel, a month doesn't go by where somebody doesn't come. Um, I have been on the expert side with customers that have more in their checking account from Willington, ask for the total town budget, personal checking. And been in meetings where, you know, they realized, just due to litigation, they could beat up a town, that happened in Sprague. So, I think being proactive, for what Bob's discussing, selectmen, economic development, absolutely sooner rather than later, before somebody forces our hand, like the gun range did. It would be very wise to coordinate, but also, it's gonna take some top-down thinking for what's still available, I mean, an election in seven weeks, nobody's gonna know which way the money's gonna flow. So, I think, you know, if anything, these particular regulations, it's a good start, but for businesses to come to Willington, they're overly complex. And so, most people are either gonna not run a business above board, or they're gonna look at a different location, without a centralized location that said, hey, I'm coming here, this is what we can offer. And you have to decide in terms of small business, how big is a small business? You know, I mean, I know small businesses running out of the back room that are turning ten million a year. And I know other ones that are so labor-intensive, they're barely holding on. I've had a proliferation of customers for just septic pumping, that are asking for six-month payment plans, so the average person is getting tight on cash, but businesses, this is a business, seems to be growing. So I think, you know, looking at that parcel there would be a very good idea, even though it's gonna annoy me with more traffic on Ruby Road. The other thing that we looked at several years back, probably close to twenty, was we lack commercial zoned areas, there's only a few areas, and they're locked up by the owners. I had a gentleman offer full price on the parcel across the bridge. On, was it Polster and Turnpike, they come together? Um, and was laughingly refused. And, you know, this guy has got the cash. So, very limited, most of the properties are locked up with people that either don't wanna sell, or are just playing around with the market to see if somebody will offer them ridiculous money. The proposals or discussions previously on the planning side, since I was behind the desks for many guys twenty years ago, involved potentially looking at high-volume areas with low impact on Route thirty-two, seventy-four, and three-twenty, especially on the Ruby side, because that's just crazy traffic all day, all night. So, some middle-of-the-road zone was something that was discussed, back then, I mean, the market was going crazy, I mean, housing was going crazy, everything else was going crazy. So, right now, you'd have time at the planning side of it to kind of consider melding with zoning, economic development, and potentially education. But, again, that's what happens with the economy, if it takes off again, Willington's hand might be forced. I'll see, you want any questions on the regulations sometime? I reviewed what you guys have drafts. Apparently, on the small business side versus the full occupation, small business can only be in an R eighty, but full occupation gets a choice of three different zones, which kind of seems like maybe getaway routes. Or it's kind of across all three.
Say that again.
You're looking at the property eligibility, work under home occupation, it's R eighty, D N C, D C R, E E R.
Yeah, home occupation can be located in R eighty.
That goes for a home office as well.
Yeah, but home businesses limit only R eighty.
It should be, because it's bigger, these other ones are, are more restricted.
Well, the thing I look at is, in terms of first brush for somebody looking at this, they would think those other areas would be more suitable for a home business, is what I'm saying. So that's why I say, so, you need to just kind of take some time and self-discussion on it. If you wanna track businesses, do you wanna track them to an area that's got the ability to convert to a larger business? I don't know. I mean, when I was building, Willington would have twenty houses going up at a time, Tom's, two hundred, Hansfield, two hundred. So, if it looks what, you wanna grow the housing side, or you wanna grow the business? Right now, I think people are squeaking on money. When people were asking for a payment plan, I'm like, three hundred dollars, seven.
You got fourteen percent poverty rate, Tom.
It's crazy.
It's high.
That's why I look, bringing more business in would probably benefit the tax base.
But do they need larger ones too, you know, that are, that are needle?
You got three hundred acres on Ruby, I don't know about other parcels.
We saw what happened with the large business that tried to come in here.
I know, that's why get them beforehand.
Overwhelming position.
Well, I, the thing I'm afraid of is the lawfare, and the bigger places can just pull the town legals until. So just kind of, you wanna be a steering it rather than, you know, tail steer. So that's why I kind of recommend, with the planning side, maybe consider all three areas.
Yeah, that would you go with, is what Robert could talk about, that's true, also.
Rob was originally involved with that discussion, looking at some of the major real affairs previously. But Christine would be the one who know the financial end of it, if she still remembers at all, from when we were looking as a town purchasing that property, to essentially be able to steer its development the way that would best benefit the town. As opposed to some large developer with, you know, twenty lawyers, you know, on timber, and materials. This litigation doesn't benefit anybody except lawyers. So, but if you make it conducive, I mean, tiered acres, you can throw all new school there, hopefully, there's still some federal money for that. And to track the teachers and kind of, essentially, the clientele you'd like. You know, all schools to start, but it's getting old, and the structure is kind of rough. I know, I've had to fix it, so. So, it's almost, it's marketing too, I mean, how the town wants to prevent itself from the future.
Well, I think that's.
Which brings us back to the discussion, these are relatively small businesses we're talking about here.
Exactly.
Real developments.
Yeah, what do you want to try?
You know, you got a person that has an office in their house, you know, and, and, you know, that, that is, how many would you estimate are in town when you count all three of these together?
When we look at the reports, the ones that have permits, not very many, I don't think it was even fifty.
Didn't think so.
But we've got a lot on paper with the state, but that could just be, you know, an L L C, and the owner or somebody gets mail here, but they're not actually being operated.
Buying, selling real estate or something.
Right.
And, and. That's one of the difficulties, because if you've got a rental property, you're gonna have it under L L C. If you've got a license that may subject you to years later lawsuits, you know, I built a lot of properties, and lawfare-wise, I mean, I can get a slow, totally frivolous lawsuit against myself, but it cost me ten thousand bucks. I mean, I had a drunk pass out in front of my house and got all the way in an ambulance, and threatened to sue ambulance, myself, the hospital that saved his butt, and eventually dropped it, but, you know. Big thing I look at also, if you got, say, two hundred in Willington, even if you charge them a hundred bucks a year, twenty thousand, that's really gonna be forever in a day to go and attract businesses. I mean, you gotta kind of probably look, small business to medium business, if you're gonna go and bring in revenue to offset some of the tax load. So, put in a place that isn't gonna bother you.
And I'm just wondering about the equipment line, just extract the word trailer in there, because if some of the equipment we automatically have that may be under the home occupation, may need the trailer. Even if it's exceeds that thousand pounds, so you're automatically, even if your business isn't big enough for a rural, what I envision of rural home business, that trail, word trailer, when you put you, bumps you up one category, which you may not need to be bumped up. Uh, it's just in my thought process, when you read that list, that piece of machinery or part there, which exceeds the one thousand pounds, and isn't used in conjunction with the business operating. There's a, some of those trailers, some quality, part of this. Have you reviewed trailers for, for whatever reason, if that, maybe equipment shouldn't say trailer? I'm sure. Whether the, like, under eleven oh one permits required, one and two, those are previous home occupations?
One and two?
Numbers one and two, so permits required, under A subsection one and two, are those previous ones on the first page? I get the three, any home office which does not comply with tier one should go for home occupation, any home occupation that doesn't comply with tier two goes to rural home business, but those, and it, it could be me that those, I'm just not processing them. Are those the old sections, it says section twenty dot four and section thirteen, are those the, the previous? I'm not forgetting. And I don't.
Section thirteen is the special permit section.
Okay.
Section twenty point zero four to. Section twenty point zero four to the certificate of zoning compliance requirements, I believe.
Okay.
That are, yeah, existing and.
So, those are existing home occupations, not a new one that goes for the home.
No, that's like the required, application requirements for a home for a certificate of zoning compliance.
Okay, so should that say home business instead of home occupation?
Um, well, so a home business, we're not.
Because we're keeping everything to home business.
But we're not, we're not requiring that for a home office. Because the home office is not under the way that it's proposed.
Okay.
The home office couldn't get it.
We had home occupation, rural home business are the ones that are gonna need that.
Right.
Okay.
So, we're pulling out the need for the annual permitting for the very small.
I, again, I was reading, not reading it correctly and interpreting, that's, thank you for the clarification.
You're always making sure that I understand the English language, which is just as tough for me as you're claiming it is for you.
That's why I'm asking.
So, I just ran a report from the Department of, the Secretary of the State, and I, I, I'm struggling to believe that this number is completely legitimate, but active businesses that are registered in town is three hundred and forty. So, again, I think that we have less than fifty that allied by the, I have a home occupation, I get my home occupation every year. And again, a lot of these are.
Is that I get my mail here, but my.
Sweet Madison's Baking Company LLC, that's clearly an in-home, like cottage, cottage food license type thing, where they, they must bake and maybe they sell online or they go to a farmer's market, nothing happens, they bake in their kitchen. And there's all kinds of stuff on here that, yeah, you know, and there's ones that we know, and some that may no longer be at, but I specifically filtered out for just active LLCs, but, you know, there could be people great pool table moving in storage. So, like, you know, exotic journals and art.
That's interesting.
Growing goodness.
Only fair.
So, there's a lot of businesses here, but they may just be on paper, they may not have employees, they may conduct no business. Peep frog potter. I mean, things that obviously there's no, there's no brick and mortar associated or anything like that. But I, I also ran a report, we were talking about just revenues, so the entire land use department. So, this is not building, this is just planning and zoning, applications, zoning permits, inland wetland applications, zoning board of appealed applications, all the administrative stuff, in total, generated just under seven thousand dollars in revenue. So, you know, our average, our average permit is, you know, a hundred and something dollars. Sort of, you know, if we.
We're not getting that hundred, it's all that hundred.
No, no, we are not. So, yeah, there's, there's, for a lot of that, we're transmitting funds to the state. And I can't see, but to get any sort of substantial increase in the fees to actually say, okay, this is what, that we're gonna be able to do something with it, you, I mean, you'd have to look at a substantial increase, I think.
Is this really the economic climate you would want to do something?
No, I'm just, I'm just thinking it like, you know, a site survey is probably gonna run you eight to ten thousand dollars, right? So, just to get a survey and property acquisition, price per square foot, I mean, all these things, right? If you, if the town wanted to do this, and in other places, you have a little bit more, like, more tools in the toolbox to pull out. There's something in, it's not just in Connecticut, that Connecticut has called tax increment financing. And it's this idea that you create almost like a zone, but it's not a zone, that you place down on a portion of town. And any in, and, and it takes a snapshot of the values of those parcels. And any increase in the values of those parcels from the moment you establish the TIF, a percentage of that increased revenue goes specifically into a fund used to then finance improvements within that district. So, that could be waterline, gas line, sewer, power, sidewalks, anything, but it's been useful in other places because developers use that to show a guaranteed reinvestment of certain funds that they're gonna pay back into the place they're gonna put the project in, and it allows them to get a better, more favorable borrowing from a bank. And way back, we talked about Connecticut Water, about water on Ruby and a bunch of other things, and you could try to do something like that with a TIF, but you need to get it in both, in place before something happens so that you can capture the increased revenue when something comes in. Someone building a house and paying six or seven thousand bucks a year, you're gonna get two thousand bucks, we're gonna not, you can't do anything with that. You need, you need some catalyst property that's gonna bring in a lot of investment, increase those values, and then use some of that money that they know the town's gonna then reinvest into the district that helps with some of those construction costs associated with the gas line thing. So, like, you'll, you probably, not that you see land use headlines, but Sutherlandton has been successful this recently, Chester's been successful with this recently, Windsor Locks, if you know, there's a large parcel that was developed right on the Connecticut River, right on the, what is it, one ninety, where the bridge comes over? That, that parcel was largely able to be developed because the developers were able to use the TIF to get the favorable rates with the bank. There's options, but you gotta have kind of some momentum so that you can capture it and do something with it. I don't know if that helps you at all, but. I can print the list, I'm happy to print the list out if you want to look at them, I mean, I don't know if you find that to be helpful or not. I suspect most of them are just from their house and the thought of, oh, my God, I'm gonna have to get a permit, you know.
Oh, yeah, we're still active, that's the other question.
Yeah, well, if I, yeah, if I go. Yeah.
Yeah.
If I, if I, if I unclick active, it goes to seven fifty. So, if I, if I filter just the active, that's what gets me to three twenty-six.
And they're all paying the small business entity tax, so I mean, they're, they're, they're doing something.
And in theory.
That's four hundred bucks a year.
I mean, the other thing, and I don't know what the values are, but any of these businesses, if they do legitimately have something, they are supposed to be filing personal property with the assessor. So, all these pieces of equipment, you know, second you use it for business, you're then paying your tax done, right? I pay tax on, I pay taxes to the town of Vernon on this laptop every year. Because this is part of what our business owns, so we're getting the real estate on the land and on the house, and then they're taxing the personal property and any of the equipment down to chairs for a barber. Um, any of the fixtures, and you know other people, but, um, so there is sort of an additional tax that if they are sort of out in the open and we do capture them, the assessor's office is taxing all that equipment in addition to the real estate. I don't know what that value is, I don't know how much of that we bring in a year, I could certainly find out, but, um, that's an additional tax.
I guess the question, where do we want to go with these? You know, we've been over them many times, you know, I was looking back at some already, it's like, we've been at this for a while.
Yeah.
And so, I'm not saying there's not more improvement to be made, but, you know, I struggle with it, and when I looked at it, because it's like, I'm not gonna get hung up about a piece of equipment, you know, it doesn't really matter. It's like, we're trying to avoid like a nuisance in an R eighty neighborhood. If somebody has one extra piece of equipment, I don't think they're looking that hard at that. You know, it's, it's like, if there's shit everywhere, you know, and we're getting complaints, it's gonna be a problem.
Yeah, well, it's gonna be, it's gonna be unsightly.
And then we're gonna start getting complaints, then we gotta, you know, force.
Yeah.
I don't think it's in a person's interest to run a rural home business that they would do that, you know, start getting complaints from the neighbors and everything, it's expensive.
Well, in most cases, they, they, they have that in mind, in some cases, it's and both, and they don't. And that sort of shows the way they keep their property, but we don't regulate how they keep their property.
Probably because they're employed.
Yeah, we don't, here you go.
But on the other hand, you can have people that start off doing one thing, and then they morph into another type of business, which ends up creating more congestion.
We call it the special permit, you know, they're in violation of the special permit if they do that.
Yeah.
So, we do have something there, especially on a larger rural home business.
I think at this point, we have to rely on the stopgap that we've got in that table that, that's basically the, the, the case that any.
You can really have, if you look at our existing regulations, there's things in town that are out of compliance with those. Are we on a warpath against them?
No. No.
But, yeah, they're. But, yeah, did we write the new regulations so loose that everything's compliant now, that nothing matters?
We can't, we can't do that either. You're just creating the potential problems. A rule of the ditch.
There are a lot of roosters, I hear them all the time.
And, I mean. I just think it's about time to probably close the public hearing since it doesn't seem like we have any new inputs from the public at this point, and maybe next meeting, mull this over and just put it to bed. Do you want me to just run through really quickly the changes from last time? So, it's hard to tell, I don't know why, Microsoft Word says it's supposed to be printing in blue, but it's printing in pink. So, if you flip between pages one and two, you'll notice the font colors are a little bit different. The. It is shit, the fuchsia is, is Rev two or, well, whatever we're at now. So, these are changes made based upon the discussion last meeting. So, that exceeds a thousand pounds, I just pulled that, put that in there because we talked about it last meeting, you could change the thousand. And then, so a business vehicle is, would be a motor vehicle used in conjunction with a business, with or without business lettering or signage, with a gross vehicle weight of less than twenty-six thousand pounds and a total length of less than twenty-six feet. So, that's your business vehicle category, and then it created that distinction, that threshold so that the commercial vehicle is twenty-six thousand pound, twenty-six feet. And again, we're not saying you can't have a business vehicle, we're not saying you can't have a commercial vehicle, it's just what category you fall into. Page two, nothing has changed. And then you go to page three, the table, I made the adjustment that was seen to be the consensus of the commission that the rural home businesses, which are a special permit, should only be allowed in the R eighty. So, that, that was adjusted. I clarified for permitted exterior evidence that in line with the criteria that are allowed, the, uh, business vehicle or commercial vehicle, and then declared also, and the rural home business category, again, permitted by the commission.
And Mike, you got something in the way to move on though?
Thank you. So. So, and just to be clear, like, for number, for the, for the permitted exterior evidence, home occupation, you might read it and, and again, this is my way of wording, it may not be, make any sense, but, and say, okay, other than a single permitted business or commercial vehicle, but then you go down further, you say, well, wait a minute, we're allowing them to have three business vehicles, we are. We're allowing them to have three business vehicles, but we're only allowing evidence of some of them. So, that could be garage, that could be screen, whatever it is. And if, that speaks to the discussion that you guys had about what if somebody doesn't have the ability to necessarily screen all of this stuff, or what if they only have one vehicle? So, we're allowing some evidence, but we're not limiting it to just one vehicle, the rest of it needs to have, needs to be screened. So, that's the intent of the way that's worded, if that doesn't make sense, we can change it. Clarified the language based upon the discussion for rural home business, percent of the building used for the occupation. So, now it says shall not occupy a total area within the principal dwelling or an accessory building which exceeds the livable floor of the home. There was some other language that was discussed the last meeting, but it was like multiple negatives in the same sentence, and it just was, I, I felt like this was a little bit more clear, say the same thing. Um, so, everything else as shown is the stuff that was discussed previously, those were the only changes from the last meeting. So, if you want to close the hearing, you can, we just need to know if we're gonna make more changes. We really should make a ton of changes once the hearing's closed, we can make some, but.
How's the information feel about this? I'm not sure what more we can add to this to say the truth.
The only thing I'll say is EDC is not meeting again till their October meeting, so that would be the fourth Monday of October. So, if you wanted to get their feedback, it wouldn't be till then, and you'd have to keep the hearing open.
The fourth Monday of October.
That's when their regular meeting is, because the open house that they just had, and that meeting is coming.
That would leave the meeting open till November?
You'd have to leave it open till your first November meeting.
That opens the meeting, this is the seventh.
This is the third.
And they, you don't have timeframes because it's your application, you could leave it open for a year. But.
I think I have the discussion, I'd like to have with EDC is just, you know, like their, what are they envisioning here? I don't think EDC particularly cares about a town home office. I don't know if that's what they're trying to achieve, I think they're trying to achieve things that are probably gonna have an impact on the tax base and so forth, they should be anyway.
Can you just make sure no one online wants to speak before we close? Okay, thank you.
All right, so we're gonna take, anyone online have any comments or input? Okay, I think that is enough. Gonna make a motion that we close public hearing, uh, BZ dash twenty-four dash eight.
Oh, second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
All right, which brings us unfinished, unfinished business, I think we'll carry that over until the next meeting. Have a discussion on it then, and go there and maybe wrap that up. You know, keep in mind, we can't make any, any kind of substantial change now of the hearing.
It's more just like great.
Yeah, yeah, we can take one with that, make sure it all reads right. All right. And G approval of minutes from September third, twenty twenty-four?
I'm thinking for the minutes from September third.
Any discussion on? All in favor?
All right, I'm gonna stay.
Okay. Minutes are approved, any correspondence, Mike?
No.
Favor, side of my public participation, items not listed on the agenda?
No, I don't remember the procedure to, uh, zoning changes, those have to go to what, town meeting?
No.
We just decided that right here.
Yep.
I just want to bob something off of people here, I've been, uh, from getting some information about, would it be valuable to have regular monthly town meetings? Like, just schedule town meetings and sort of a state of the town, normally, we have it when we have to have a vote. And I keep hearing about, uh, lack of communication and how people don't, don't, don't hear what's going on in town. There's, it's hard to get, um, uh, hard to get information, uh, the, the answer is often, well, you know, you can go to the meetings, you can, you know, watch the YouTube videos, and I used to say that too. And then I started to look at the meetings and realizing, gee, it's rare that you get all of the seated people that agreed to go to the, you know, for, for various, just life, you know, the, what life brings us that. That agreed to go to the, you know, for, for various just life, you know, the, what life brings us that. To see any particular commission that has all of the regular members seated all the time is, is rare. So if the people that were appointed and elected and agreed to be there can't always make it, it's probably a little disingenuous to expect. The townspeople to follow along as well, so my thought about having regular town meetings could be just to open that up to. So the public has know that there's gonna be, or the public would know every month there's a town meeting, and it would, we could have things like this. Public hearings, just that informational hearings to say, hey, there's gonna be, you know, the, the planning zoning commission is. All I'm talking about is ownership, and just one more avenue to get the word out so people do not feel isolated, that they do feel they're part of the process. I don't know, do you think that would be a good idea? It's just a question, I mean, I have no authority to do it on my own, it doesn't, it's just something I'm thinking. That I hear all the time, that people don't know what's going on, how do we get the word out? I take a little effort, cost about four hundred bucks, put the notice in the paper, these are not referendum meetings, so you don't have to have a full page ad, it's just. An ad, and a, and a widely read publication, if the legislator would, legislature at this, Stato would agree that websites, email blasts. And these new phone uh text messaging would be sufficient, it would be even less expensive to get the word out. Um, other than that, likes electricity and possibly pay for recording secretaries and whatnot.
So who would present at the meeting and?
I don't know, depends, no idea, it's just a concept.
Are you trying to get official business done, or are you basically?
No, it would be no vote, it wouldn't be, I mean, maybe, I mean, it could be in conjunction.
So would you even have to post it in the paper?
Uh, I think at any town meeting, I believe, has to be posted, yes. And it'd be, but it doesn't, I mean, it could be votes, I mean, we could, I mean, when there would be time to have one, then. But I'm wondering, the, the notice.
But you'd have to have enough members of that particular commission there, or you'd have to have.
Not, not, not just for information, yeah, but I mean, no decision would be made, it's just simply of whatever it is. I mean, there's things that are going on in town all the time of interest, and I'm not, the uh, the way. The first electorate runs the board of elected meetings now, they're more like town meetings, he has a lot of interaction, he puts. President speaking, talk about everything you want, there's an unlimited amount of time, sometimes they drag on quite a ways, but quite a while, I don't know, just something else to think about.
So what you're kind of suggesting is to have a, a townwide TIO, a talk it over.
A talk, yeah, something like that, I mean, if you look at years gone by, that's what towns did, the town meetings were on a regular basis. And it would be the, you go to the town meeting to talk about the town's events, and because remember, we are the. We are, we may be members of the commission, but we're also voters, and we are also the legislature, that is, we are the Congress, people are the Congress. We're the ones that decide what is legislated in this town, and I don't know. I'd like to see more people get out and not just have those various factions that are yea or nay. Stack the deck and then make a decision for everyone else.
Would this meeting be online too?
Yeah, sure. It should be many, it should be long, it shouldn't be the best thing, there should be a lot of discussion, I think that's the way town meetings should be. I'm gonna keep talking about it.
If you have all the words, it could be kind of like a fabric jam.
But they don't have to come, I mean, it doesn't have to be, they don't have to talk about what they wanna talk about, but. You know, if you're gonna bond, you know, two and a half, three million for a new roof at Old School, I think you should be talking about that a hundred and twenty days before the vote. Not the night of the vote, but what happens in the town meeting is like, we wanna do this, as soon as somebody says. I make the motion to move it, and in seconded, you can't talk about the subject anymore, all you can do is talk about, do we want to vote, I don't know. And that kind of kills it to me, and I think that's sad, I think it's sad that the very night we wanna vote, and sometimes you might be hearing it for the first time. Conversation is really limited, so. I think that could, we could do something a little bit more effectively and get more, I don't know. Because they can be fun when, when the conversations get live.
Well, Christina, when she was first, what woman? She had all the commissions and all the other like nonprofits, I mean, the historical society was involved with this. I don't know, once or twice a year at the library.
Right.
And it was just, it was open to everybody, and everybody just get up there and he, they had a PowerPoint presentation, he just got up and. He told everybody what you were doing.
Yeah. I think that could happen more regularly.
This is so.
That's it. Would you have to warn for that meeting?
Uh, well, yeah, there'd be a, I'm not sure how it works, but it would be a kind of a standard warning, you could say the next meeting is here. And I, I don't, I don't think it has to be as arcane and sort of mysterious and complicated. As, as it's led today, because we've been having town meetings since sixteen hundreds. So it can't be that. Complicated, because we don't have them all, but it seems difficult. And this is.
All right, item J, staff report discussion and.
So we have.
You have item one under there.
Yeah, that's the only thing that I have.
All right.
So I have, I gotta, if there's nothing else, I'm gonna uh stop the recording and.
We need a motion?
Yeah, we do need a.
Yeah, just wanna make, because there's really nothing else on the agenda, so just for the purposes of everybody else. We, we'll just go into executive session to come out and adjourn, nothing, unless there's anything else you guys have.
No, I'll, I'll make a motion if we go into executive session, and uh, you know, we'll come out and adjourn the meeting.
Oh, second.
All in favor? Okay.
Okay, so.
Hey, it's uh. Let's see, eight fifty-five PM, meeting adjourned.